Welcome to the Supreme Court of the United Kingdom. Where today we're hearing the appeal in the case of Zed and Another and Hackney London Borough Council. Details of the case can be found on our website by clicking on Cases and then following the link to Current Cases. I'm hearing this appeal together with four of my colleagues, Lord Kerr, Lady Arden.
Good morning, everyone.
Lord Kitchen.
Good morning.
And Lord Sales.
Good morning.
Because of the coronavirus restrictions, we're hearing this case remotely. I'll turn now to counsel for the appellant, Mr Ian Wise, Queen's Counsel, and invite him to begin his submissions.
My lords, my lady, by a preliminary point that is perhaps important for those listening more generally, an anonymity order has been made in this case and I think that your lordships have extended that from the order that was made in the court below. And so hence the matter be known as Zed and Another versus Hackney and Agudas Israel.
Yes, I should perhaps just say a word about that. We're not in this case going to be concerned very much with the circumstances of the individual appellant, but the court has made an order protecting their anonymity and so there should be no reporting of their identities or of any information which might enable them to be identified. Thank you, Mr Wise.
Thank you, my lord. Your lordships and your ladyship, of course, have our written case. I don't propose to go through that and particularly following my Lord Lord Reed's comments a few moments ago. I don't intend, in presenting the case, to go through all the background materials which the court has in any event. What I propose to do in the time permitted is to go through the focus on the legal issues that arise in this appeal. But before I turn to the legal issues, I want to just make a few introductory comments, if I may. Firstly, although the court's considered a number of discrimination cases in recent years, this is the first occasion that it's had time to consider the parameters of positive action for the purpose of discrimination law and the important distinction between permissible positive action and impermissible positive discrimination. And the court will appreciate that our case is that Agudas' housing allocation policy falls into the latter category, namely positive discrimination. Second introductory comment, if I may. On the evidence before the court, Agudas is the only faith-based charity or housing association that provides accommodation exclusively to members of its own faith. The court will have seen the evidence with respect to three faith-based housing associations which don't allocate properties exclusively to members of one faith, the faith which they are particularly concerned with promoting the interest of. I don't take the court to that evidence now, but for your notice, the references are to be found in the written case at paragraph 98. Third preliminary point, there's no evidence that Agudas has ever allocated any of its properties to any person who is not a member of the Orthodox Jewish community. I'll refer to the Orthodox Jewish community as the OJAC. Agudas allocates its property primarily on the basis of religion rather than on the basis of need. The consequence being that it let properties to applicants with lesser needs than my client Zed. The incontrovertible evidence, as the court will see, is that Zed had greater need than those who were allocated properties by Agudas. And we get that particularly from Miss Carrier's third witness statement to paragraph 10 EF912. The fourth point, by way of introduction, is to emphasise the danger and the situation that my client's son was in at the relevant time. And although we've said we're not going to explore all the background facts, this is a particularly material fact which we emphasise. And on that point, if I can take the court to Zed's witness statement that she made at the outset of these proceedings, which starts EF776. And in particular to paragraph seven of that statement, which is at EF778. A short passage, if I may draw, which I draw attention to. You will see there, she says, "In brief summary, I instructed solicitors in 2017 because of the very great risk of the welfare and safety of my two disabled children." And it goes on to explain circumstances of her children. "The boy's behaviour is extremely challenging and after I sought legal advice, the London Borough of Hackney's own occupational therapist assessed our home and identified a very serious risk of an accident which could have been fatal from the access balcony to the former property." So this isn't just a case of great need. This was a potential, a serious or even fatal accident. That's supported, if we can just go on a few pages, to EF788, to the occupation, to an occupational therapy report prepared by the local authority or on behalf of the local authority. And you'll see the relevant section is at the bottom of page EF789, where you'll see with respect to the open walkway outside the flat, she refers, she describes the situation and the children. And then at the third line says, "This is a significant safety risk that could lead to a fatality." So a very serious situation indeed. And that's what prompted Mrs Justice May in previous proceedings to make the order she did, which we have at EF801, on the 30th of August 2017, where you will see the second part of that order says, "The defendant counsels forthwith to rehouse family accommodation which provides a safe and risk-free environment for the claims to young children." So that then is an essential part of the factual background of this case. Given those introductory comments, and particularly the presumption of allocation of properties to members of the OJAC by Agudas, it's not surprising that it's common ground that its allocation policy is directly discriminatory on religious grounds. We say, however, that it's also discriminatory on grounds of ethnic origin, which of course falls within the rubric of discrimination on grounds of race under both domestic and European law. The court will see that we have an application to amend our application to the Supreme Court. We've got that in the EF41. We made that application so as to ensure that all the parties were entirely clear about our case. And your lordships see that there is no objection in principle from the other parties to that application, save with respect to the caveat that they make. For the reasons we set out at paragraph 103 of our written case, we say that that caveat is misconceived. The crucial point for present purposes being that there is no concession to the effect that there's no racial discrimination in this case.
You'll appreciate, Mr Wise, it's unusual for us to entertain a new argument at this level.
Well, we say it is a new argument, my lord. It was a full square before the courts below.
Well, if it's a new argument, why is it subject to? If it's not a new argument, what's the purpose of the application?
Well, we were very anxious to ensure that there was clarity in the way that we were presenting the case. We were doing it as a matter of caution in that sense and so as to make sure that there was no prejudice to any parties. It's a clarification rather than anything else, my lord.
Can you show us where this point was dealt with by the Court of Appeal?
My lord, the Court of Appeal dealt with it very, very shortly. And that's one of the points that we make in our appeal. We've got it in the judgment, I think it's paragraph 54. This is one of the complaints that we make, that the Court of Appeal didn't engage fully with the issue, which was set out in the skeleton arguments.
Lord Sales.
Yes, in paragraph 54, to be addressed a different point, it's predicated on your case being based on discrimination on grounds of religion, not race, and giving reasons why the Race Directive doesn't apply directly in those circumstances. So that doesn't show that you were running a case below based on race discrimination, rather than reverse.
No, it doesn't. Indeed, my lord, and it doesn't do justice, we say to the arguments that we were presenting.
Right. So are you saying that there was an argument in the divisional court about race discrimination?
One of the procedural difficulties that's arisen in this case, my lord and my lady, is that in the divisional court, the respondents, the defendants there, the respondents here, didn't take the point with respect to proportionality being not required for the purpose of section 193 to B. And therefore, your lordships see that the divisional court dealt with the point very shortly. I think it was paragraph 103. And so the point came up following the skeleton arguments of, on behalf of Agudas, in the Court of Appeal, to which we then responded.
But as I read the Statement of Facts and Issues, it doesn't go into direct race discrimination at all for the appeal to us. It seems to be a completely new argument that you're trying to introduce onto the appeal, going beyond the Statement of Facts and Issues.
Just bear with me one moment, my lord.
All right, so that's at page 95 of the electronic bundle.
I've got it at page 102 of the electronic bundle, my lord, if I may.
Yes, that's the last page, yes.
If we look at paragraph 26A, it just expresses it in general terms with respect to EU law or human rights law.
Yes, but it doesn't say the Court of Appeal was wrong to, or raise a question whether the Court of Appeal was wrong to understand your submissions to be based on a case of direct discrimination on grounds of religion as distinct from race.
Sorry, my lord, if I can take your lordship back a page, page 101, paragraph 22.
Yes.
See there, second sentence, "The appellant seeks permission to contend that Agudas' arrangements also involve direct discrimination on grounds of race, but that is not accepted by the respondents." So it's false within the SFR, I would say.
Oh, that's just, that's saying that you're going to try to persuade us to allow you to introduce that as an argument on this appeal, which is what we're pressing you on, whether you should be allowed to do that.
Yes, well, we made the point already, my lord, that the point's been fully pleaded in the written case. It's responded to by both of the respondents. There's no prejudice to them.
You would need evidence, wouldn't we, that Orthodox Jewish people constitute a distinct race?
Well, we, well, that's one of the issues I'm coming to.
I might have thought that was a somewhat discredited view.
Well, this court had the occasion to consider that point in detail in the JFS case, of course, my lord. I was going to take the court to that.
Well, we can't borrow factual findings from one case to apply them in another.
No, not at all. Don't invite your lordship to do that. And I was intending to come to that in due course, my lord. But it is important, it is a very important part of, plank of the case, of course, as your lordships and your ladyship will appreciate, clearly set out in our case and responded to by the other parties.
Yes, we've read what's in your case. Is there anything else you want to say in support of your application for permission to run this argument?
Just bear with me one moment. If you just bear with me one moment, my lord, just turning off the skeleton arguments in the court below to consider the way in which it was put there. And hopefully my junior will just be able to point me to the relevant pages. Can I come back to you when we've got the relevant references? My lord, you don't have them immediately to hand.
Yeah, we have your skeleton argument which begins at MS562. But certainly if you want to come back to this when you find the passage you want, then we can do that.
562, does your lordship say?
Yes. And that's your skeleton in the Court of Appeal.
Yes, there was a supplementary skeleton as well, of course, because at that juncture, the proportionality argument hadn't been taken, point hadn't been taken by Agudas. But I'll consider that in due course, my lord, if you come back, I'll come back to you.
But just before we leave it, Mr Wise, I think you told us paragraph 103 in the divisional court judgment, which is at page 279. That doesn't seem to say anything about a distinct race discrimination case.
No, no, not at all, my lord, no, no. Because what had hap, sorry, I perhaps didn't express myself clearly enough. But what had happened in the divisional court, the issue on proportionality in section 193 to B hadn't arisen. It hadn't been taken by Agudas. And so the divisional court took the 1932 issue compendiously with both sub subsections A and B. And so the issue only arose for the first time when it was taken by Agudas in the Court of Appeals. And that expresses that, the substantial overlap, which implies.
So the picture seems to be not, an issue not dealt with in the divisional court, not dealt within the Court of Appeal, which you're seeking to introduce on the appeal to this court. Is that a fair characterisation?
No, it was raised in the Court of Appeal, my lord, but adequately dealt with by the Court of Appeal, we say.
I see. All right, thank you.
Just, is it the supplementary or the? Sorry, my junior's just drawing my attention to the paragraph in the skeleton. No, just bear with me one moment, my lord. Yes, it's EF574, paragraph 27 of our skeleton argument, the original skeleton argument in the Court of Appeal. Does your lordship have that point?
What's the page number, please?
EF574, my lord.
Thank you.
Paragraph 27.
Well, we're going to have to invite Mr Grozinski and Mr Hutchings to make any submissions that they want to make in relation to this point. Before I do that, Mr Wise, is there anything you want to add? Or is section, is paragraph 27 really the basis of your argument?
Well, if we go over the page, your lordship will see there reference, sorry, this is EF576, paragraph 33, you'll see there the reference to Brie Ash, which of course is part of our case now. And 34, the tension between positive discrimination and positive action. So you can see that the racial issues were in play, we say, before the Court of Appeal, my lords and my lady.
Thank you, Mr Wise. Mr Grozinski, I think we had better get you to respond.
My lords, my lady, we have addressed the procedural issue in our written case, starting at EF197, at paragraphs 69 to 75. Before I say anything, could I just invite the court to reread those paragraphs?
Yes, thank you. As I see, so far as evidence is concerned, we perhaps need to see what the divisional court said at paragraph 86.
That's EF276, my lord.
So are you saying that whatever may have been said, whatever the evidence indeed may have been in JFS, is the evidence here of Mrs Simon and Simons was that the issue of allocation of housing by Agudas depended purely on religious observance?
My lord, that's precisely so. And that's why if the appellant is given permission to argue this point, we would be submitting that there is no direct ethnicity-based discrimination. Just to make clear, my lord, we don't dispute that in order to be halafically Jewish, by which I mean Jewish according to matrilineal descent, you have to have a Jewish mother. And for the reasons found in the JFS case, that is an ethnicity test. But we do, there is no evidence, and we would not accept, that being a member of the Orthodox Jewish community is any kind of sub-ethnicity within the group of people that constitute halafically Jewish people. So there's no question of there being evidence surrounding that sub-question. On the procedural issue, there's little I have to add to our written case. And if permission is granted, I will be in a position to explain why we say there's no either direct or even indirect ethnicity-based discrimination.
Yes.
The question at this stage, or at least a question at this stage for us is whether, on the question of whether Orthodox Judaism is an ethnic subgroup, whether evidence, whether you would seek to induce evidence on that question.
Well, if that, my lord, was how the case was properly put, there might have been a need for evidence. So far as I understand it, the way which Mr Wise puts the case on ethnicity is that all Jews to be halafic Jews must meet the JFS matrilineal descent test. And therefore, by definition, so do Orthodox, ultra-Orthodox Jews or very Orthodox Jews. It's not entirely clear to me if he is arguing that there is some further subdivision constituting a further ethnic group. He has referred to the Jaisska Finance case, which is a recent decision of the Court of Justice in 2017 on what constitutes an ethnic group. And I will, if he is granted permission to advance a race-based case, explain what the significance of that decision is. But there is no evidence before the court going to the specific question of whether members of the Orthodox Jewish community, as opposed to Jews more generally, constitute a specific ethnic group.
The evidence, the evidence from the Agudas witness quoted in paragraph 86 by the divisional court is that we respond to people from many ethnic backgrounds.
And that's plainly right, my lord. They, it doesn't matter in order for you to be an Orthodox Jew, A, what the colour of your skin is, B, what your nationality or national origin is. You can be, you can be an Orthodox Jew whether you come from England or Morocco or Egypt or Russia or anywhere in the world with any ethnicity in the sense that is usually understood. And although Millennium Friend's written case refers to references to ethnicity in the relevant document, in the form that the applicants had to fill out, where you have to tick certain boxes, it said in terms, "This is for monitoring purposes and has nothing to do with the allocation of housing in the first place", like one sees ethnicity monitoring forms in all sorts of contexts.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Grozinski.
Do I understand, Mr. Grozinski, that you are sanguine about this argument, provided Mr. Wise is not suggesting that Orthodox Jews constitute some sort of subgroup of ethnicity? Is that right?
Sanguine in the sense that if he's not running that particular argument, I'm not evidentially prejudiced and I'm in a position to deal with it.
Yes.
My lord, whether he should be permitted to run it now, given the procedural history, we've already made our submissions on it and I have nothing to add.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hutchings, do you have anything to add?
Well, very little. It's really a matter for the court whether they're to consider what is potentially an important legal issue on the basis of the only evidence on this apparently now crucial issue, being that referred to by the divisional court at paragraph 86. Because so far as evidence was concerned, that is it, in a nutshell. But I don't seek to add to what Mr. Grozinski has just said.
Thank you. Mr. Wise, is there anything briefly you want to add in reply?
Yeah, just one comment, my lords and my ladies. Say that, to make clear that there was no misunderstanding as to what the parameters of the hearing in the Court of Appeal were. If we can go to the permission to appeal decision of Lord Justice Miles at EF628, you'll see there that in granting permission, it says, picking it up on the second line, it is at least a realistic argument that AIHA and Hackney operate a blanket argument amounting to direct discrimination on grounds of race, even if not colour, as well as religion, regardless of the housing needs of others who are not members of that community. That was how Lord Justice Miles interpreted our skeleton arguments. And we would say that that's entirely correct.
Right, thank you, Mr. Wise. We're going to have to discuss this. So unless our IT engineer tells me that we can't manage this, what I would suggest is that counsel all leave the meeting. Our broadcasting will stop. And you'll be notified when we have reached a decision and are ready to resume the hearing. And at that point, we'll also recommence the live stream. Yes, Mr. Grozinski?
Page reference, my lord. Can I give you one page reference?
Yes.
I mentioned the form, which was the monitoring bit of the allocation questionnaire. It's EF1481 in the second box. Starting with the words "in order to".
Our IT engineer is telling me that you can all remain in, counsel can all remain in this meeting. And the justices are going to be sent an invitation to a private meeting to discuss this matter. So we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
We're ready now to resume the hearing in the case of Zed and Hackney, London Borough Council. We've heard an application by Mr. Wise on behalf of the appellant to allow him to advance an argument. And that application is opposed, in particular, on behalf of the second respondent, the Agudas Israel Housing Association. It seems to us that there was clearly no finding of racial discrimination made by the divisional court. And the point now sought to be made was not addressed either by the Court of Appeal. And we are not entirely clear as to what the case now sought to be made is. But we are prepared to hear argument from Mr. Wise on, as it were, a de beni essay basis in the meantime, to see where it goes. The argument that we're prepared to hear would be on the basis that Jewish people generally fall within an ethnic group. We're not prepared to hear argument based on an attempt to categorise Orthodox Jews specifically as an ethnic group, as that would require evidence which is not before us. We're also not prepared to allow the JFS case, a previous decision of this court, to be reopened. As counsel will be aware, that was a nine-judge panel which split five-four. And there's no way in which the present constitution of the court could review anything that was said in that case. So on that limited basis of the ethnicity of Jewish people, we're prepared to hear an argument and we'll see where it goes. I hope that's clear enough for you all. And Mr. Wise?
Much obliged. Am I back on now? Can people hear me?
Yes, you are.
I'm much obliged for that, my lord. So if there'd be any misunderstanding, our argument wasn't that Orthodox Jews form a discrete ethnic group of themselves. And indeed, Agudas accept that Jewish people do form an ethnic group in their case. Neither do we propose to reopen the JFS case in any way. But I am very conscious of the time that we've now lost. And with that, I wish to bat on. Can I just make one other very brief comment, my lords? The ruling is provisional in that you argue de beni essay. Whilst we had the occasion to go back to our original claim, and I'm not going to take the court to the papers now, but just for reference, you'll see the original claim for judicial review of page 293. You'll see that the claim was on the basis of race or religion. And also, if you see at paragraph 61 of 313, again, we make absolutely clear that the claim was made on that basis. And I make that point because of the concern of, my lord, Lord Reed, that this issue, the respondents may not have had proper opportunity to put evidence in on the point. Your lordship and your ladyship will have seen that considerable evidence was put in by Agudas in response to that claim. But in any event, we are where we now are. I was on introductory comments. If I can just make one further introductory comment before we get to the hard-edged issues, my lords and my ladies, and that is with respect to the legal context of this matter. And it's a general requirement in domestic EU and convention law, of course, that public bodies and bodies exercising public functions act in a non-discriminatory manner. But as the court will know, the ordinary position is direct discrimination, such as we have here, can't be justified under the Equality Act. There are, however, permitted derogations from that general requirement, and in particular, positive action, to give disadvantaged groups the opportunity to compete with others on an equal footing. But those derogations, we say that section 159 and 193 are such derogations. Those delegations have to be construed strictly because the overriding intention of the legislation is to ensure that functions are carried out in a non-discriminatory manner. With those introductory comments, I turn to issue one in our case. And the court will see that that is whether the Court of Appeal was wrong in not finding that section 1932B of the Equality Act 2010 is not subject to a proportionality requirement as a matter of EU law. The court will see we deal with this in our case at paragraphs 17 to 37, EF112 to 120. And you'll see from that that the argument is set out in ten steps. The first step is that discrimination on grounds of race, which is a concept that includes ethnic origin, is specifically prohibited by EU law. This is paragraph 20 of our case. The principles of equal treatment and non-discrimination, including on grounds of race and religion, are of course fundamental principles of EU law, which we see enshrined in article 28 of the Charter of Fundamental Rights of the European Union. You have the reference there, that's at EF4506, not necessary for me to take the court to that at this stage. Also, pursuant to that article, we have the Race Directive, which is pertinent to our case. If I can take the court to that, for those using hard copy, that's at Authorities' bundle, tab 29, EF3177. Bear with me one moment.
I should say, Mr. Wise, the justices are all working electronically. We don't have paper bundles.
I'm grateful for that, my lord. So we should have EF3177, what's termed the Race Directive. You'll see that the full title is Counselor's Directive of the 29th June 2000, implementing the principle of equal treatment between persons irrespective of racial or ethnic origin. And as is familiar to the court, we see the preamble. But it's the articles, of course, that are important. If we can look first at article 2, 3179. The one you'll see provides, for the purpose of this directive, the principle of equal treatment shall mean that there should be no direct or indirect discrimination based on racial or ethnic origin. And the scope at article three, you will see at 31, within the limits of the powers conferred upon the community, this directive shall apply to all persons as regards both the public and private sectors, including public bodies, in relation to. Then we have A to H. And specifically important for our purposes is H, access to and supply of services which are available to the public, including housing. So that then is the scope of the Race Directive. We then turn to what is meant by ethnic origin for the purposes of the Race Directive. That's been considered on a number of occasions by courts in different jurisdictions. You'll see that we refer to a couple of cases, paragraph 20 of our case, in particular, the Bulgaria case, paragraph 46, which the court has at EF3224, where the court found ethnic origin is to be determined expansively, referring to societal groups marked in particular by common nationality, religion, faith, language, cultural and traditional origins and backgrounds. That's very similar and chimes very much with the domestic court's approach to this issue. And you'll see that at paragraph 21 of our case, we refer to the Singh and Dowle Lee case, particularly Lord Fraser's judgment or speech, I should say, in this case. The court has that set out at paragraph 21. It's EF2597 for the members of the court. And you'll see that, again, an expansive approach taken. A similarly expansive approach is apparent from the European Court of Human Rights in the Timaschev case. We've got that in the Authorities' bundles at 3147. Case the court may be familiar with, this is discrimination against people in Chechnya. But for present purposes, it's paragraph 55 at EF3160 to draw attention to. And the court says there, ethnicity and race are related and are overlapping concepts, whereas the notion of race is rooted in the idea of biological classification of human beings, subspecies according to morphological features such as skin colour and facial characteristics. Ethnicity has its origin in the idea of societal groups marked by common nationality, tribal affiliation, religious faith, shared language or cultural and traditional origins and background. So again, we see an expansive approach to the concept of ethnicity and ethnic origin. So both the domestic and the European courts are taking a similar approach to that. The second point we make in this argument is at paragraph 22 of our written case. And the court will see there, we say, that article five of the Race Directive provides for a limited derogation from general prohibition on racial and ethnic discrimination, namely the use of positive action to prevent compensation for disadvantages linked to a person's racial or ethnic origin. We can just turn back to the Race Directive, this time at page 3179. You'll see there that positive action, under the heading Positive Action, the directive says, for ensuring full equality in practice, the principle of equal treatment shall not prevent any member state from maintaining or adopting specific measures to prevent or compensate for disadvantages linked to racial or ethnic origin. And whilst the court has that open, if I can take you back to, or remind you of the wording of section 1932B, which we've got at 2362, members of the court will immediately see the similarity in the language used in article five of the Race Directive and section 1932B of the Equality Act. The third point we make is that since positive action measures constitute a derogation from the basic EU law principle of equal treatment and non-discrimination, such measures must be construed strictly in accordance with the principle of proportionality. And that much is clear from the case law that we're going to come to in due course. Fourthly, the general prohibition on The general prohibition on discrimination, including discrimination on grounds of race or ethnic origin, is implemented in UK law by sections 13 and 19 of the Equality Act. And on this point, if I can take the court to the explanatory notes on that act, there at 2382 of the court bundle, the relevant parts of them are, and you'll see from 2382, firstly, paragraph five, the main European directives affecting racial discrimination are, and you'll see the first one being the Race Directive, and so on. If you go over the page. 2383, under the heading Transposition of EU Directives, paragraph 21, see the explanatory note says, the act does not itself implement EU directives for the first time, it replaces earlier legislation which has implemented EU directives, most of which are setting that in paragraph four above, as the domestic legislation.
Can I, Mr Wise, you said a moment ago that in relation to article five.
Yes.
Permitting positive action, that that was subject to a requirement of proportionality. Are you going to be citing to us authority concerns specifically with voting that proposition?
Yes, I'll take your lordship to it now. I was just conscious of time and hoping to deal with it later. But if your lordship's troubled by it, I'll take you to it straight away. It's the Cresco case, EF 3278. This is the Austrian case that your lordship may be familiar with, that dealt with the specific measure in Austria that provided for a recognition for religious holidays for four distinct Christian denominations. And the question was whether that was permissible or not. On the point that your lordship raised just now, it's paragraph 65, it's EF 3329. I'm not going to take your lordship to the facts of the Cresco case at the moment, because I'll perhaps come to that later when we come to issue three. But if I can just invite your lordship to read that paragraph.
But which paragraph?
65, my lord, 65. I think that answers the question that your lordship raised. Now, that, of course, is in the context of religion, not race, but one of our submissions is that the same principles apply to these derogations that are in similar terms. Again, we'll come to that in due course.
I see it's proportionality in a rather particular sense. Okay, right, thank you.
Yeah. Fifth point that you'll see, paragraph 25 of our case, is that section 1932b is a form of positive action measure. And as we've already seen, highly material that the language used in that subsection is derivative from article five of the Race Directive. And it's important to recognise that the formulation is a familiar formulation in EU law. We also find it in what's termed the Framework Directive. Which the Cresco case was concerned with. That's at EF 4516. At article seven. And also in the Equal Treatment Directive, which we've got a few pages further on, starting at EF 4519. At page 4523. You'll see article six of the Equal Treatment Directive. Phrased in similar, phrased in similar language. The sixth point we make under this head. Is that since EU law permits such positive action measures only to the extent that they comply with the principle of proportionality, it follows, we say that section 1932b must be construed so as to include such a requirement. That is, at least to the extent that the activity which is sought to be justified on the basis that falls within the scope of EU law. And that then leads to the seventh proposition, which is that Aggerdis's policy of only allocating properties to members of the OJC falls squarely within the Race Directive. And accordingly, within EU law generally. And you'll see we make three sub-points there at paragraph 27, A, B and C. Firstly, at A, members of the OJC are self-evidently united in a common religious faith, etc. B, the OJC has a cultural and traditional origins of its own, primarily associated with religious observance. And we give some references to the evidence, the court there. And at C, the OJC also satisfies the criteria set out by Lord Fraser in the Mandala case. So accordingly, we that the policy falls within the scope of the Race Directive. Now, we also rely, as the court will see, on the JF S case for this point. We don't seek to distinguish it. We seek to rely on the findings, not of fact, but of law, particularly those findings of Lord Phillips. And for the court's note, can I refer you to paragraphs 35, 39 and 41 of Lord Phillips's speech? And the point made by Lord Clark at paragraph 130. Where he makes the perhaps obvious point that a person can discriminate on both religious and ethnic grounds. It's not necessarily an either or question. And that's what we say applies in the present case. So we say, for all those reasons, the Race Directive applies in these circumstances.
Can I take you through, can I ask you about the implications of that?
Yes.
If we go back to article five, which is on page 3179. It's slightly awkward, because what I'm wanting to do is think about the precedent in Cresco that you took us to about proportionality and try to think about how it works in relation to article five.
Yes, my lord.
Well, in Cresco, paragraph 65, we're told that the principle of proportionality requires that derogations remain within the limits of what is appropriate and necessary in order to achieve the aim in view. Now, so the aim in view under article five is to ensure full equality in practice.
Yes.
By preventing or compensating for disadvantages linked to racial or ethnic origin.
Yes.
Now, so long as you are maintaining a measure which, with a view to that objective, and the measure is appropriate and necessary in order to achieve that objective, then the first part of paragraph 65 will be satisfied.
Well, appropriate and necessary, of course, is another way of saying proportionate.
Well. Necessary isn't the same as proportionate.
No. No, but that, your lordship there puts into full focus the, what we would say is the key issue in this case, and that is issue three, and that is whether, what are the permissible limits of positive action? Where is the line drawn between positive action and impermissible positive discrimination?
Yeah. Now, the second part of paragraph 65 adds that, it's still under the heading of the principle of proportionality requires that, requires that the principle of equal treatment be reconciled as far as possible with requirements of the aim thus pursued.
Yes.
Now. You cannot reconcile equal treatment with, with measures aimed at preventing or compensating the disadvantages linked to racial or ethnic origin. Because evidently those measures have to be measures which don't abide by the principle of equal treatment. They're trying to compensate for particular disadvantages.
Yes. Well, what's interesting there, my lord, your lordship sees in brackets at the end of that paragraph, after the sentence your lordship's just cited, it sees the Lomas case. We're going to come to Lomas in due course, under issue three. And again, the key issue there is the line to be drawn between positive action, which is permissible under article five of the Race Directive.
Well, it sounds that that might be more important. I'll wait until we get to that in that case.
Yes, it's probably more convenient to deal with at that juncture if that suits your lordship. The reason I say that is because, to take it out of sequence, Lomas is one of a run of cases. And what I propose to do under issue three is to take the court to a number of cases, of which Lomas is one, and see how the jurisprudence has developed, which then gives rise to what the court said at 65 in Cresco. So hopefully we'll deal with that shortly after lunch. We were on the, I think, eighth point. Yes, it's the eighth point, starting at paragraph 30 of our speak, our written case, where you'll see the proposition is uncontroversially, domestic legislation falling with the scope of the Race Directive must be construed compatibly with EU law compared, as we know from the Marling principle and related cases. I don't anticipate this, that's a controversial point. It is, however, controversial as to the extent of the interpretive principle or the reach of the Marling principle, Marley Singh, sorry, principle. And we say that it's perfectly possible, certainly not impermissible, to interpret section 1932b in the way contended consistently with that, with that principle. There's nothing out with the basic principle, which of course requires direct effect to be given to EU legislation. So that's point eight. The final part of the jigsaw is the ninth proposition, which is picked up on paragraph 33. Which says, where we say that if necessary, we contend that section 1932b should be interpreted as incorporating a proportionality assessment, even if the activity sought to be justified on the basis of that provision doesn't itself fall within the scope of EU law. That's the consistency argument. And we say that anything contrary to that approach would introduce undesirable and unnecessary inconsistency into charitable activities that fell within the scope of EU law. We rely on two cases for that proposition. Firstly, the Bull and Hall case, and secondly, the Esop case. And if I can just, if I can take the court to those cases, you'll see the first case at EF 2498. The background to this case will be familiar to the courts. This is the homosexual couple booking the room, hotel room, and the, whether that amounted to, the refusal to let them have the room amounted to unlawful discrimination. The point that we're concerned with is picked up by Lady Hale at paragraph 22, 2498 of the bundle. And to similar effect, if I can take the court on a few pages to the Esop case, which begins at 2568. We see a similar point being made in the speech of Lady Hale, with whom all the colleagues agreed.
Mr Wise, I'm sorry to interrupt you before we leave the Predian Bull citation at 24, page 2498. As I understand it, looking at that, that's not addressing the Marley Singh interpretive obligation point, but is looking to the interpretation of domestic regulations according to ordinary principles of interpretation of our own law. Is that right?
Yes, my lord. This is on the, we've moved from, in our case, from the eighth to the ninth of the points here, my lord. So the Marley Singh principle is at point eight. Point nine, we've got the consistency principle, that however one wants to characterise it.
So just as I understand, you're not trying to add together the Marley, what you get from the Marley Singh principle with a consistency argument, because the Marley Singh principle is to override what would be, otherwise be the ordinary interpretation of the domestic principle.
Yes, that is right, my lord.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's an alternative argument, my lord.
Yes, thank you very much.
So your lordship has the point on consistency in Predian Bull. So your lordship has the point on consistency in Predian Bull. Similar point I was just coming to at 2576 from this court in the Esop case. And your court sees that at paragraph 19, what Byron and Hale, with the unanimous agreement of the court, says there. So our submission on point nine is that even if the court, contrary to our submissions, is of the opinion that Agadis' housing allocation policy doesn't fall within the Race Directive and is only discriminatory on religious grounds, Section 1932b would be plainly capable of authorising discrimination that would otherwise be prohibited by the Race Directive.
But, sorry, Mr Wise, if I could just come in on that. Section 1932b, particularly read in contrast with 2A, seems clearly not, as a matter of domestic interpretation, to incorporate a proportionality requirement. Is that not so?
On his face, that's entirely correct. And that's a point that we're going to address in due course. The point we're making here, my lord, is that for consistency's sake, if other provisions require proportionality to be read into Section 1932b, then there should be consistency across the board. So whether it's Equal Treatment Directive, the Race Directive, or different sets of, or application on a different set of facts, the approach of the court should be consistent.
Thank you.
So the the contrary arguments that have been advanced on this point are primarily based around the JFS case. And the court will see what, and make its own mind up as to whether our submission is made out on that. And I say no more about it. But two other points before we leave this point is that it said that the public benefit test for charities is within the margin of Parliament's appreciation and is somehow relevant to whether proportionality should be incorporated into Section 1932b. We say that that is a misconceived argument. The public benefit test is an entirely different matter than the issues that we're concerned with. And in any event, it doesn't deal with the direct effect of the Race Directive. Margin of appreciation in implementing the Race Directive is a very limited application of course. And as we see from the cases, the court makes its own mind up as to whether the directive has been given proper effect. The second point, and this touches, I think, on a point made by Lord Sales a few moments ago, and is touched on by the Court of Appeal, is that if the appellant's submissions are correct, then it would make Section 1932b redundant, I think is the word that's used, i.e. wouldn't add anything to Section 1932A. We say that is also a misconceived argument. Because when one looks at the language of subsections, sub-subsections A and B, we'll see that they're addressing different things. Subsection A is concerned with a proportionate means of achieving a legitimate aim. Subsection B is concerned with preventing or compensating for disadvantages linked to a protected characteristic. Now, there may be considerable overlap between those two concepts. The legitimate aim may incorporate the need to prevent or compensate for disadvantages linked to a protective characteristic. But it doesn't necessarily follow that there is overlap. And it doesn't follow that there is complete overlap. In some cases, there may be a little practical difference. In other cases, there may be. It wouldn't, therefore, make, our interpretation would not, therefore, make Section 1932b redundant. And in any event, we say that that is irrelevant, even if we're wrong about that. That is irrelevant to any interpretation consistent with the Marleasing principle, which, as we know, imposes far-reaching obligations on the courts to interpret domestic law harmoniously with the EU provisions. My lord, Lord Sales, sorry.
Mr Wise, you say it's irrelevant, but if one's applying the Marleasing principle, one only goes so far as it's possible to do so in terms of interpreting the domestic legislation. It's an interpretive obligation closely similar to that under Section 3 of the Human Rights Act, isn't it? So the domestic legislation may be framed in such a way as to impose limits on how far you can go under Marleasing.
It does, it does, but the limits, well, the limits were explained, and this is where I was going to take your lordships and your ladyship to next. The limits were explained in the judgment of Sir Andrew Morrit in the Vodafone 2 case, which we've got in the papers at EF4221. And take the court to that.
There's a body, one of the peculiarities about this is that we tend to focus on domestic authorities on the scope of a Marleasing obligation. There's actually quite a lot of ECJ or CJEU authority on it, which is rather less drastic than the domestic authorities.
Yeah. I was just looking on that point, my lord, which is an important one about the authorities referred to by, in the judgment of Sir Andrew Morrit, when you look at the law report, how many of the, and there are in fact a number of the JKC's cited. But anyway, that's
What page are we on?
It's page 4221, my lord.
Thank you very much.
You'll see the context of the case from the headnote. The Court of Appeal was concerned in this case with an apparent conflict between the controlled foreign companies, the CFC provisions in tax law, which sought to limit tax avoidance by taxing parent companies on the profits of overseas subsidiaries, as if they were established in the UK, to tax avoidance measure essentially. However, as we see from the judgment, there was jurisprudence of the CJEU, which meant that the provisions were only compatible with the right with the right of freedom of establishment if their application was confined to wholly artificial arrangements designed to avoid tax. This required a company to be able to secure for itself an exemption from the CFC provisions by showing it was objectively established in another member state and carrying on a genuine economic activity there. We get that from paragraphs 24 and 25 of Sir Andrew's judgment. But there was no such exemption in the domestic law. So we see the background to the case. And what Sir Andrew does, we see, if we can pick it up at paragraph 37, page 4234, he sets out there, paragraphs 37 and 38, submissions from counsel in that case, but they appear to have been accepted by the Court of Appeal, or Sir Andrew, as to the appropriate principles that should be applied in a case such as this. And can I invite the court to read those two paragraphs? Important points we would say at A to F in the passage cited at paragraph 37, which then are tempered by what's said at 38. The meaning must go with the grain of the legislation to be compatible with the underlying thrust of the legislation being construed. So question arises to how the Court of Appeal in that case approached their interpretive obligation that they had before them. And the court will see at paragraph 39, 4235, between the letters D and E. In this context, it was submitted by counsel that all that was required was to introduce an additional exemption in respect of a controlled foreign company, if it is in that accounting period actually established in another member state of the EEA and carries on genuine economic activities there. So that was what was being contended for as a way of marrying or dealing with the tension that arose in this case. And the conclusion we get at 4237. Sir Andrew says, to my mind, the extension of the exceptions to the CFC legislation, which counsel for HMRC contends is as permissible as either of those which is found in favour in Guidance case and the ITD card services case. It doesn't alter the impact on other CFCs which are accepted by another exception. Certainly provides an additional exception, as counsel for HMRC submitted. The grain or the thrust of the legislation recognises that the wide net cast by Section 747.3 is intended to be narrowed by Section 748. So it didn't go against the grain of the legislation to interpret the tax legislation as incorporating a further exemption over and above those beyond which Parliament had already inserted into the relevant legislation. That being, of course, a classic exercise of the Marleasing principle. Now, applying that principle to the present case, that approach to the present case, we say it's entirely possible to incorporate a proportionality requirement into Section 1932b. It doesn't go against the grain of the legislation. And indeed, we would contend that it's entirely consistent with the general thrust of the Equality Act, which of course gives primacy to non-discrimination. And so there's no impediment to the submission that we make. I'm reminded, or shown that the time is now after five past one, my lords. I don't know if my lady does.
I'm afraid I have lost track of it.
Well, I've just about finished issue one in any event, my lord. So it's a convenient time as far as submissions are concerned, anyway.
Yes, well, in that case, we'll adjourn now and resume at five past two.
Thank you.